Tomorrow as well.
I have a motion.
We're gonna now continue the entire agenda. All right, well, first thing to do tonight would be a motion for the agenda. Do we have any motions to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second is.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Nope, okay. We have the minutes from October tenth and twenty fourth. You may have noticed the eighteen pages of minutes in here. Included with our packets. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes which have not already been communicated to staff? All right.
I move to approve the minutes for October tenth and twenty fourth.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We have no items on the consent agenda tonight. We have one item on the administration administrative session, which should be in the twenty twenty four meeting schedule. It was at the end of the packet before. Or somewhere in the middle, right after the minutes. There we go. So we have two in each month except for December. We will not be meeting at Christmas. We prefer to be home. Does anybody see any conflicts with the proposed dates?
Is the twenty eighth is just right before Memorial Day?
Um.
It would be the day after, wouldn't it?
The day after.
Yeah, the day after Memorial Day.
Okay, and we'll pull it up and double check on that one. But yeah, it at least wouldn't be the same. Okay. So unless everyone's planning on being out of town for Memorial Day, we should be okay. Hey, unless somebody sees a, well, November twenty sixth, is that Thanksgiving week? Okay, we should be all right. But we always have the option to adjust the calendar as needed, as we've done many times. Do we have a motion for the planning commission's schedule for twenty twenty four?
I'll make that motion.
All right?
A second.
And is your motion to accept?
Yes, to accept the calendar for the planning commission for two thousand twenty four.
Twenty four, and do you accept the, or do you second the amended motion? Okay?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we have ourselves a schedule. On the legislative session, we have three items, and I believe we are going to be continuing a couple of those. Would you like us to take care of those upfront?
Sure, we'd like you to continue item one and item three.
Okay. As they are listed as public hearings, we still need to open and have a public hearing, but we'll just preface that with we are going to be continuing these items and not actually discussing them tonight or making any motions other than to continue. Does someone want to open the public hearing for item number one?
I move to open the public hearing.
And wait a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing for item number one, Springville Community Development requests amendments to Springville Codes Titles eleven and fourteen to comply with the requirements of twenty twenty three Senate Bill one seventy four Local Land Use Development and Management Act modifications. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the item?
Not seeing anyone come up to the podium. I move to close the public hearing.
Wait a second.
I second the motion.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a motion for this item?
Oh, I move to continue it until brought back by staff.
Future date or something?
A future date, yep.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number one is now continued, and we will move to item number three with the same procedure. Item number three is Springville Community Development requests an amendment to Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter four, Section three oh one, Land Use Matrix to Refine the Permitted Uses in the Main Street South Gateway Zone. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing for this.
Do we also have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now open for number three if anyone would like to address the commission on this item.
Seeing no one coming to the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a motion for item number three?
I move to continue the Springville Community Development requests an amendment of the Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter four, Section three oh one, Land Use Matrix due to refine the permitted uses in the Main Street South Gateway Zone to a further date.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
And it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Items one and three will now be continued until a future date. So moving to item two in our public hearings, this one is Springville Community Development. Request amendment of Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter six, Section one thirteen Off-Street Parking with a presentation from Director Yost.
Chair, commission members, thank you. Tonight we have an item that has its genesis in basically two, two reasons. First, the parking code had a number of areas that just needed to be tidied up, cleaned up, both to be consistent with state code language and to better, be better, easier to administer. Second, the city council requested a number of months ago at the request of some downtown property owners to evaluate ways to facilitate the reuse of buildings downtown that was hampered by parking requirements that arose from change in the use of those buildings. So that's the other impetus for this amendment. So the items that we're taking care of, or that we're proposing tonight is, as I mentioned, updating the current language to be consistent with state code. We're adding criteria for considering a parking reduction request that are a little more easy to evaluate. And we're adding criteria for considering uses not specifically listed, and we're also, in terms of the consideration of the parking reduction and the use not specifically listed, making those administrative or staff level determinations. And then one of the amendments we'll go over exempts the historic downtown area from change of use requirements for parking. And then we also alphabetized the list of parking off of required minimum parking. So I have in front of you, you have in your staff report, and I have on the screen each page of the proposed amendments. On this page, we're simply just changing terminology to make it read more clearly and reflect spelling conventions. On the second page, we are changing a lot of these approval processes to the Land Use Authority, which is another change that has been implemented in the state code. And this allows staff to make decisions on many of these items without having to come to the planning commission, but still allows their referral of these to planning commission. And that, the first one is a essentially shared parking that's across the public street can be granted by the Approval of Land Use Authority. Tandem parking is allowed in any adopted traditional neighborhood plans or special zoning overlay districts. In the lakeside landing specific, lakeside landing special district overlay, we count, or have provisions for allowing tandem parking to count towards the minimum required parking. So we wanted to make that internally consistent. And shared parking, again, just changing planning mission to Land Use Authority, the same for construction plans, for alteration or construction. And then the substantive change in E to address the plant of the city council's request. The code currently reads that whenever the use of any building is changed, the new use shall not be permitted and a business license shall not be issued until and unless the premises comply with the requirements contained herein. The amendment we're proposing is that this requirement should not apply to the historic downtown area is defined from four hundred south to four hundred north, from one hundred west to one hundred east.
What's the reasoning behind that?
To permit the conversion of existing, the change of use in existing buildings to happen without requiring additional parking. Right now, if one of our retail stores was to convert to a restaurant, that wouldn't be permitted because they wouldn't have the parking required. Let's say that, let's pick Mountain Rock Music, for instance, if that business left that building and a restaurant came in, the requirement for a restaurant is more than for a general retail. And so we wouldn't be able to issue a business license for that restaurant because they didn't meet the parking, but the existing use is essentially grandfathered in because it's always been a retail establishment of some sort. It also extends to properties in the north area of the historic downtown. There are two homes on Main Street that are being proposed to be put to commercial uses. That really further the goals of our downtown, of our new reframing downtown plan. And the, providing the required parking for those buildings based on their square footage is essentially prohibitive of having those buildings change use. And in the case of one of the buildings, the, probably the best use for maintaining, preserving, and the house, an important historic house, is to have its use convert to some type of professional office or event, small event space. And by permitting those uses to change in those areas without requiring additional parking, we further the goals of the downtown plan by promoting vitality, by promoting walkability. And by allowing small incremental changes to happen downtown without requiring the major investment, and sometimes prohibitive, both logistically and financially, investment of providing additional off-street parking.
Does this apply to both sides of one hundred west and one hundred east?
No, it does not.
Just the downtown side.
Yes.
So a house that's at like fifty, fifty east off Main Street, would, this would apply to that then?
If it's, again, this doesn't permit any changes that aren't allowed by zoning, so if it's zone residential, let's take the home behind on Third South, no, sorry. Yeah, Third South and Main Street, where the sandwich shop is on the corner, there's a house about halfway through the block behind there. That is zoned residential, so that couldn't convert to a commercial use and then not have to provide additional parking. But it's really where we have, like, the one house I'm referring to is the Reynolds House on one hundred north and Center Street. And then a bungalow on three hundred north and, I'm sorry, three hundred north and Main Street and one hundred north and Main Street. The house on the three hundred north and Main Street on the northeast corner is being converted to a bike shop and would require additional parking, and in that case, they're able to provide it. But it is really, especially considering the amount of on-street and parking available in the area. Makes development and makes bringing additional business and vibrancy down harder than it should be. And on the Reynolds House, providing the parking required, based on the square footage of the house, would cover the, almost the entire garden plot on the back half of the property. So those are the two examples, and those houses are already in the community commercial zone, so they're already zoned for commercial use.
So is there not a provision that that could be applied for on a specific case? Where someone could come to the commissioner, whoever, and say, we want to do this, can you give us, you know, a break on the parking or whatever else? I mean, it seems like this is kind of a blanket, wide-open thing that we.
Very much is, yes.
Yeah, so we have no, no conversations about, about parking for anybody then, is what you're really saying.
It wouldn't apply to new, new development.
Right, but any existing building, so.
Correct.
I think, I think what's being asked is a good question. Is there a scenario where we might? It might be a very bad thing for the city to, I don't want to prevent people from, from doing what they're doing, because I think that's very exciting. But, I mean, could there be something in where they, where they just come and, you know, make their proposal, here's what we're gonna do, and then have them come present? So that, I think that's kind of what you're asking is.
You could.
At least we have an opportunity, the city has an opportunity to look at it.
You could. My intent honestly was to remove any discretionary approvals from that process. I believe it's best practice to allow those things by right.
So if someone wanted to convert one of those to a movie theater, what's gonna take a lot of parking, that would, that would allow it then?
Correct.
So how do you, how do you adjust or develop that when you've got an entire, one business taking all the parking downtown and you have nothing you can do about it really?
I would love to have that problem.
Well, there is that problem several times during the day.
It, and then this is where the, a larger parking philosophy discussion comes into play. I feel that it is the city's role to adequately control, monetize, and essentially control the market for what is essentially a public good, which is on-street parking. By providing on-street parking free of charge and with no time limits, we're essentially distorting the market for that. Any good that's provided free is obviously overutilized. And that demand needs to be managed actively. This is one area where the city needs to step into a market and play a central planning role, essentially. That's one of the key tenants of the reframing downtown plan is that the city needs to do that. And so if we ran to the point where there was a quantifiable issue with parking in downtown, and we said there's not enough parking for what's happening, and a parking study yielded those results, there are many strategies that the city could employ to mitigate that. From the basic premise of charging for on-street parking in high-demand areas, which is one of the key tenants of general parking reform philosophy or theory.
So do you think we should have a plan in place, a parking plan in place, before we, before we implement this, this program? I look at it, because when we went through the reframing downtown.
Right.
You know, we, several times it was said, we could put parking here, we could put parking there, we could create a space for food trucks here or do that there. You know, it seems to me that if, if we're going to put something like this out that is just a free-for-all, as people go in, and, and again, I'm actually pro this right now, but shouldn't we have a parking? If, if it's the city's responsibility to figure that piece out, shouldn't we have a parking plan in place that, that will, will, will address any, you know, movie theater, using the movie theater example? Shouldn't we have a plan in place to address that now?
Generally, I would say yes. In Provo, it, it backfired that we had reductions in place that were utilized. And then when parking problems showed up in the neighborhood, and it wasn't a residential neighborhood, but it was a commercial neighborhood by the frontrunner. The reaction from tenants, residents, customers, and then eventually from the city council was to get rid of the by-right parking reductions. Because it was viewed as a problem, even though the problem didn't come from the new development, it came from existing, the changes to existing development, and that was a bad outcome. In this case, in reviewing this eight-block area, or I guess sixteen-square-block area, the potential for those changes is very minimal. At least in the near term, there's not a lot of properties that could convert easily to more intensive uses unless, per se, somebody, you know, took the Grace Bible Church and did, put a movie theater back in there. But in that case, that's probably.
That's probably an extreme example.
Yeah.
Even so.
Yeah, I, I am.
If, if, if we're getting a lot of business down here, which, I hope that happens.
Yes.
And, and parking becomes a problem, we should all start riding our bikes, right, Logan? But, but if parking does become a problem, shouldn't we be addressing it before it becomes a problem?
Yes, and I think we have a lot of lead time. That's, that's why I'm proposing this at this point.
That seems to me that what we're doing is, and I could be wrong, so correct me if I'm wrong, is we're taking everything that was coming before the planning commission and is going to the Land Use Authority. The Land Use Authority is who?
Land Use Authority is Community Development Director, or his designee, or the planning commission.
Okay, so in other words, you're the one that decides whether the, the parking lot, if it can be used this way, tandem parking, shared parking, construction plans for a parking facility. None of those things will come back towards the planning commission.
And some of those didn't already, so some of this is like internal consistency. The only reason you would see a plan for construction of parking if it was part of a site plan. And that site plan would only come to you if it was larger than a certain size. And with changes to the Land Use Development and Management Act in, that we continued in the first item. Majority of administrative action the state is pushing to the staff level, so unless it is a legislative action, something that's going to the council, they really want to push it to the lowest level of approval possible. And are, really with that new bill last year pushing us to do that. So this kind of preempts any concern we may have there, but it does, you're correct, it does remove additional routinely. It can still come to the planning commission if there's an issue, or if the applicant for some reason requests it to be heard before the planning commission. But it does provide staff-level approval for most administrative items in this, in this chapter.
I actually love that part. I love getting rid of the red tape and, and going forward. But again, I mean, if you go up to Park City, right, you can go up to the top of Main Street, they've got that nice multi-level parking garage. Park up there and you can stroll up and down, go to restaurants, shops, whatever, and, and you don't have anything to worry about. And I don't know, it seems to me if, is there enough parking around, on-street parking around to address if we got a vibrant Main Street going with the Allen's Block being developed and whatnot? It's a.
I, I just think it makes sense to have more people look at this than like just a few people. I think from the city's standpoint and also from your standpoint, it protects it a little bit better so that we've got a wide range of people with different backgrounds, different uses, different opinions that can provide. I mean, that's what the planning commission's here for, right, is to kind of look at things from a wider range perspective and say, so if we're gonna make a big change in the city, if we're gonna add a parking, parking facility, I think that should come before the planning commission.
And that's really an interesting discussion about the difference in items that come before the planning commission, which is probably something we need to do, continue to train on. Because I, it confuses me even sometimes. Whenever something is administrative or it's, any, anything that's administrative, the role of the, of the planning commission actually is not to bring diverse experience and opinions and backgrounds to the issue. It's simply to review the proposal and determine whether or not it meets the criteria established in ordinance. And all of these things that we're talking about today have to have objective criteria, or the city can find itself in trouble if there's not clear boxes to check to determine whether it's a yes or no. Where we are looking for opinions and experience and diversity and breadth of knowledge is where we are making legislative changes like this. So this is where we value, or where the code values and the system values these in-depth discussions when we're setting policies, we're setting the, essentially making law or making recommendations to the council on lawmaking. Once we've made those laws, once we've made those regulations, our ability to, what is, not to selectively or.
Arbitrarily.
Arbitrarily, discretionarily make decisions is essentially eliminated or, or decreased to the point where we can, we have to determine based on the evidence on the record whether something does or does not meet the requirements.
So, so, sorry, I had done that. So we just had a proposal a few weeks ago that came to us and said we have for the Allen's Block, and we want to reduce the number of parking, we want to apply for that. According to this, if I'm, unless I'm not reading it right, you've scratched out that an applicant may apply the planning commission for the reduction of, you know. So it sounds to me like this is not gonna be the planning commission anymore that addresses those kinds of issues, so.
Correct.
If a customer comes to you, comes to the city and says, I want a project, but here's the standard of parking spaces, and I want to apply for a reduction in that, who reviews that?
Staff reviews that.
So it's only the planning department staff that decides whether or not that's a valid request or.
Whether or not they meet the objective criteria established in ordinance, yes.
Yeah, I'm not very comfortable with that, and just from my own personal standpoint, I think that it puts way too much, you know, it takes it out of the hands of the people that are trying to, like, plan and do those kinds of things. And now, we won't even see that, we won't know it, we won't have a voice in it. Does it go before council that way, or how does it, does council have a say in it?
No, because it's an administrative item. Again, the role of, the process here today is to tell us what the rules are, to tell us under what conditions you would be comfortable granting a reduction in parking. And then staff determines whether the application meets that standard or not, so really.
So it never really comes before the planning commission then?
No, it's, it would not, and even the Allen's Block site plan, by law, doesn't have to come to the planning commission. Because it's just an administrative item, and we just determine whether it meets the code. We brought it because it was kind of of broad interest, and we thought it was valuable for everyone to kind of see that.
I think you got some good feedback to it, but I do think that it's, I'm concerned, and maybe it's just because I don't understand the whole process, but I'm concerned that we have the ability for someone to come in, want to reduce the amount of parking that's required for a business. And it's just approved, it never comes before the council, doesn't come before the planning commission, you know, that, that's, I don't think that's very good for the city.
See, I, I don't have a bigger, bigger problem with that issue. For me, I just, I just hope that if it becomes a thriving downtown, that we've addressed parking and there are places to park.
Yes.
That's my only.
Agreed.
I, I'm good with the staff determining this kind of stuff, because I think it wipes out red tape of coming here to this city council, but.
I agree, it wipes out the red tape. The only, like, kind of like Ralph's saying, though, it takes it out of the hands of, we don't have enough parking downtown. So to me, we're kind of getting the cart before the horse.
That's my point earlier.
I think we need to develop a plan for parking. I mean, we all know the issues from Main Street to Third South. Most of the time, you try to go to UPS, you try to go to Central Bank, even the parking on Main Street, all the way down Main Street and on Center Street, it's a mess. You, you know, you drive around the block, try to find a place to park. We don't have, and if we need meter parking there to eliminate people just pulling in and staying for hours for free. I just feel like we're, we're kind of jumping the gun here. Let's get a plan in place for parking, and then let's move forward with this.
This is my point earlier.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
So the, we're kind of talking about two different things. There's the changes to, from planning commission to Land Use Authority. And then there's changes to the ordinance where it's saying that the historic downtown district gets an exception for this parking requirement.
Correct.
And so the. And so the, if we didn't change the historic district, uh, parking requirements, but, you know, we changed the land use authority, it's the same, we would be having to make the same decision that you guys are making, meaning that if it fits their criteria, it, it is approved, right?
Uh, I think you may still be conflating the two just a little bit, uh, because on the changing the standard for downtown, there is no review criteria for that. We're essentially providing a by right exception from requiring additional parking when a use changes. On the other hand, so, so there is no review, nobody would review that. It just is a by right provision of the code.
Yeah, that if we, if we, if we, um, recommend.
Right, but on the other hand, yes, we're change, we're taking the review that the planning commission, the administrative review the planning commission's currently doing and making that, uh, possible to be done on the staff level.
But we're, we would both have to follow the same criteria.
Correct.
No matter if it's staff or if it's planning commission, if it fits the criteria, it, we have to approve it, like additional uses, that kind of thing, right? And so the fact that it would be staff or planning commission just means that we don't have to spend wait to Tuesday to, to talk about it every twice a week, I mean, twice a month. But the, whether or not we change it to give downtown area the by right to, you know, not have to follow those parking provisions, that's a different question, really.
Yeah, it's severable. Yeah, you can consider them separately, for sure.
Is it, the, it's not taking away from our ability to make decisions on things to have staff do it. Because it's, whether you do it or we do it, the same criteria is being applied to it.
Correct, and I don't, I, I mean, I would concur with Ralph that even when you have objective criteria and you have seven people looking at it, you may have a more robust discussion about whether something meets the criteria or not, uh, the any panel of, uh, people weighing on an issue is, uh, there may be advantages to that, but in my uh, practice, I've generally only seen improvements to the process, improvements to outcomes when, uh, administrative items are, uh, taken to the staff level.
Right, but for example, on item, let's see, I don't know what page, you don't have a reference on it, but what we've done is we've taken the request which and then changed it to that lowers the amount of parking stalls by more than twenty and it goes to twenty-five percent now. Shall not be improved, so we've moved, according to what we've got in this package, we've moved from a, you cannot go more than twenty percent to now you can't go more than twenty-five percent.
Correct.
And we've also gone to, I mean, it seems like we're loosening up the parking and we're opening up ourselves for non-approval, so I.
We're loosening the parking without providing parking.
Right, we're, we're saying, we don't, you know, anyone that wants to come in, great. The parking requirements can be waived, they can be, you know, addressed, whatever we want to do. And although we want a vibrant downtown, what we don't want is somebody come down and knock out other businesses or, that are already there. Just because they have the ability to say, well, we're, we need parking and then we have to start charging for parking and then no one wants to go down to the UPS store anymore because they can't, you know, they have to go pay at the meter to, to walk, to stand in line and everything else, so. Um, I don't know, myself, and I'll make a motion, but I don't know how to exactly say that, but I I had a motion that we, A, put together a planning.
I'm not sure we're ready.
Okay, sorry, I'm so sorry. Okay, yeah, to me, I'm just, I'm, as I read through this, when you guys sent it to me, it just seemed to me like we're just wiping out a lot of the um, things that we've done for parking and said, if a business wants to come in and we can, they can have whatever they want to do without any consideration for parking. And it seems almost counterintuitive to what we've got for our, we had the, you know, the active transportation plan where we're talking about um, putting, um, bike lanes and restricting the, um, parking down to a narrower lane, having you know, ins and outs and things like that to kind of stop, it's cutting even more parking, so. I, myself, using the parking, makes a big difference whether I come downtown or I don't come downtown. Um, because you have to have, if you have parking, I mean, families, people that have kids in the car, they've gotta come down, they've gotta have a place to park and walk in and do business, so. I mean, Magelbees is over there s- using that parking clear down there and it's a great use because Central Bank's not using it very much right now. So, anyway, I'll be, I've said enough, so I'll let you guys.
I believe I interrupted your presentation. Would you like to continue your presentation before we continue discussion?
Sure, we can talk through the, the rest of the provisions.
Sorry, yeah.
No, that's great, I'm, I'm happy to take discussion as it comes, uh, that's effective. So in C here, again, just another land use, all of these, uh, we were down to E. And then accessible parking, uh, again, just updating the terminology and.
Can I clarify that? So you're adding accessible parking to the minimum parking requirements.
Right.
If business has three parking requirements and one of them is accessible, then that's, that's, they still have three. And that's not a reduction of the, of the, um, required parking for that business?
Okay, ask me that one more time.
So, let's just, let's just say the scenario that a business has to have three parking stalls.
Okay.
Okay, and then to be a business, they have to have an accessible st- parking stall. So now they have one accessible and two regular parking stalls.
Correct.
So they no longer, um, qualify because they don't have three parking stalls. This is changing, that's what you're asking.
Yes, technically, we have not, on the Allen's Block or any other project, we have since my time here, we've never been counting required accessible stalls as separate from the, uh, required parking. And we wanted to make sh- uh, in this case, uh, as Laura was going through this, she saw that that wasn't specifically called out in here. It didn't prohibit us from doing that, but we wanted to make it clear in the ordinance, so we weren't just relying on institutional memory to remember how we count those. So it's not changing a- any practice, it's just codifying what we're already doing. Uh, some internal reference fixes, uh, the reduction in parking standards has been rewritten, uh, to make it really it's granted if the reduction, uh, meets, or the request meets the criteria. And as you mentioned, changing that criteria, uh, from twenty to twenty-five percent, or the ma- the maximum reduction from twenty to twenty-five percent. Again, more, uh, land use authority changes and six A is really, uh, where we get, where we make another substantive change. Or before, we really had to come to the planning commission and through some nebulous set of standards determine what the parking should be for a use that's not listed. And it was actually hard enough for us to figure out how to do that well, that we often just recommended to people that they apply for an amendment to the parking code to add their use to the list. And that, that's expensive and takes a long time. So what we've proposed here is that if you meet the, that we will evaluate the requirements for types of buildings and uses not specifically listed by evaluating the intensity of the proposed use, the hours of operation, uh, the any shared parking, trip generation and the peak demand, so essentially when peak demands uh, occur for that use compared to, uh, other uses in the area. So those are the, uh, five criteria that we've, uh, that we're proposing to allow us to, uh, assign parking, uh, minimum required off-street parking for uses not specifically listed on the table. And then, uh, I'm really appreciative of this. Laura went through and made this, uh, alphabetized. I've struggled for a long time remembering where each thing is and essentially having to go down the whole list to find any. Now they're alphabetized and we can find them quickly, just a clerical cleanup.
So no, no changes to the actual?
No changes to the actual, it's just struck through and put back because we're moving it around and that's how, changing code, you have to notate it that way.
Like going back and forth, trying to figure out what changed there.
Yeah, we didn't sneak any, uh, ratio changes in here.
I have a question on, uh, section six where it says that off-street parking shall not, shall be provided as follows for all new buildings and structures or enlargement of any existing buildings or structures. Does that apply in the downtown areas?
If you're gonna add floor area, you need to park that floor area.
Okay, so like, if, if Pier Forty-Nine and, and Mountain West, they decided they wanted to knock the wall down between them and create some other more intense use with that, they would have to.
No, because the total square footage isn't changing.
Oh, okay.
So you've got two thousand of Mountain West, Mountain Rock and two thousand of Pier Forty-Nine, you still have four thousand.
Okay, so it would only be if they like had it, an addition or something onto it?
So like, uh, let's say that the, uh, the Reynolds House on First North, somebody wanted to come in and build a large, uh, build like a a business on the back half of the lot or build a, uh, some townhomes on the back half of the lot, that, they'd have to provide the parking for that. But if they're gonna change it from a house to a law office or a meeting venue, they wouldn't have to add the additional parking for the change of use of the existing square footage.
So it's not, it's not per, like, lot or whatnot, it's, it's the actual square footage of.
Well, it would, it works out the same way. If you, in the example before, if you've got two thousand on one lot and two thousand on the next lot, each one has to have that much parking or has, has had that much parking and if we combine the lots, we still have four thousand on one lot instead of two thousand, four thousand on two lots, so your ratios are the same.
It could, it could be argued that they could create more intense uses than they could if they didn't combine the space.
And that's where we need to differentiate between change of use and an addition. Change of use is a blanket statement that no matter what use you're changing to, you don't have to provide additional parking to meet the off-street parking for that use. If you're adding to the square footage, if you're building new square footage, you have to provide parking for that new square footage. If you're could, if you, even if you put a door between all the buildings between Second and Third South, it still wouldn't change the equation. Because i- the change of use wouldn't trigger additional parking.
I don't understand, Josh, why we're moving that. The request to lower the amount of parking stalls from twenty to twenty-five percent, why? I mean, we don't have parking in areas now.
Just, it still gives us, we still have the criteria to follow there. Uh, it just gives us a little more headroom.
We didn't, we don't have spaces now in certain parts of the downtown district.
And that's why we have the criteria to make, to base the decision off of. So right now, even on the twenty percent, if that's not merited or if it doesn't meet the criteria, we don't have to grant a twenty, twenty percent reduction. But if we saw some argument that somebody made, let's say Lemon and Sage didn't wanna, uh, wanted to expand a little bit and wanted to uh, not have to build, had, to build a reduced number of parking stalls, we say, hey, you know, a twenty-five percent reduction really makes sense there based on your current utilization and your, uh, projected demand. We wouldn't have the dis- the ability to approve anything over twenty percent.
But if you don't have space now, why are we increasing it? I guess is my question.
Well, I would contend that there are spaces in downtown that are overparked and that requiring that those kind of reductions would be, would meet the criteria.
Maybe on the east side, but most generally on the west side, there's not a lot of spaces to park. It's cool all the time.
Depends on which block you're on.
Larson's video, that's not Larson's video anymore. What is it? Yeah, there's lots of parking right there.
Are you gonna park up to Larson's and walk two blocks there? Most people aren't.
No, I, I would park, I would park on, I would park on Second South and walk around the corner. Or, or just walk from my house, because I, I am lucky to live.
Your house is gonna get the parking if this thing.
I already get the parking from the Presbyterian church, so, like, um, but, but when I do, you know, go to the UPS store specifically, because that's the one that is the worst to try and get parking at, I, um, if there's not an easy to get into spot, I just park on Second, Second South.
Go through.
I had one package, but as I was getting it out, almost everybody along there was opening the back of their car and they had big packages. So I'm back to the question of maybe we need to solve the parking problem first.
I agree, because I think, I think the, the what's really gonna happen, and it's already starting to happen with like the packaging thing is like Staples and Provo and some of the other co- or businesses are now accepting the UPS packages and it's driving business to Staples that we normally would have in our downtown, downtown area. So as other people see a need and then they see that we're not fixing it and they're gonna have, and they have no ability down there. I don't think you have people that are really parking on Main Street and staying for hours. I could be wrong and maybe that's what we ought to do is study it and see if we've got fifty percent of the parking stalls being taken up in the morning and they stay all day. And that would be, that's a different kind of a problem than if we've got people coming for five minutes because I don't care how many times you meter it, if you let someone come and, you know, fifteen-minute parking or something like that, it's one thing, but, so, I, I agree with the others that I think that the parking is a big challenge, but I'm also concerned about the fact that we've that now we're working, we're moving towards a different approach to parking when we really don't have a plan. And I, that's just my opinions, but. I did have one quick question. So you said that you just re, re-alphabetized the items?
Yes.
I, where is the single-family residence? I mean, I, maybe I didn't.
Halfway through the next table or started there and then.
Residential, single-family, detached or attached?
It's residential, single-family.
Now it says residential, okay. And then multifamily, residential, has that been combined there?
No, it's just residential, multifamily. We did.
They just changed a little bit of the different.
Yeah, we changed the name.
Trying to do it really quick and.
We wanted to keep all the residential.
I look at it on my phone on the job site when I'm trying to review for the thing, I don't always get the best.
Yeah, that's general practice is that you put all the residential together and now that we're alphabetizing, putting the residential first makes it work.
On the last page, number eight, is that being implemented and enforced? I don't know that I've seen a lot of bike parking racks.
Not well. We haven't had, uh, a lot of new development that's subject to that. Uh, but, and we haven't been doing a good job of implementing that.
When was that put in?
Uh, before I came.
So it would be before Smith's Rec Center?
No, the Rec Center and Smith's were, and I came in August of nineteen. And I know Smith's had some on their site plan and, uh, what, that there was some discussions about whether it was implemented or not, but that's, it's a big part of implementing our active transportation plan is making sure that these standards are good and that what they're actually being implemented.
Do we have any way of encouraging or asking the existing larger businesses to
Absolutely.
Come into compliance with this, see, they don't have to.
Uh, pro, uh, the Bike Walk Provo has had a tremendous amount of success just, uh, in advocacy with large and small businesses and providing, uh, uh, parking. They, Smith's in Provo now has parking, uh, has bike parking that actually works. They got good bike parking installed at the, at the Provo Rec Center. Uh, other, uh, it, I can't now remember the name of the center on, uh, Eight Hundred North and. I can't now remember the name of the center on, uh, Eight Hundred North and not Eight Hundred North, Cougar and or, yeah, Cougar Boulevard and Fifth West, Riverside, uh, Macy's and all that, they've added. So they've had good success with that. We'd obviously like to get it caught up front, uh, for anything new, but that's definitely something that they've been able to make a lot of progress in, in advocating and encouraging and provide, even providing technical assistance.
Could the city lead the way by adding some other rec center?
Absolutely.
That would be great during, I mean, in the summertime, you go down there and there's bikes just kind of leaning everywhere.
Yes.
Which is wonderful. It means people are still riding their bikes and as families are riding their bikes there, but I'd love to see the city set the example.
Right. If it's a behavior we wanna encourage, we should make the bike parking as, as, we should be as concerned about the bike parking as we are about the car parking, if that's, if it's important. I think it is.
That was my question. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Josh, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm going back to parking. Sorry, we've been pretty much wrapped around the wheel on this for a while, but,
The whole thing's about parking.
Again, going, going back to, going back to reframing downtown, there was a lot of, we, we could do this and we could do that, right?
Right.
Um, are there any plans for parking or is it just more, well, we could put it here and we could put it there?
The plan for parking is that we need to go through a process and undertake a strategic parking.
So what do you think? Do you think it's wise to go down this path without a plan for parking?
I do because I-
We're increasing, we're increasing parking here. I mean, sorry, decreasing requirements, which means an increased demand. And, and maybe that's enough. Maybe Second South is enough to park everywhere. And I, you know, when we go to, to Magalbys on a busy night, I'm good. I park, park clear in the heck away from Magalbys and I'm okay with that.
I, I don't see that there's a very quick runway to big problems. Just cuz the amount of facilities that we have or the amount of buildings we have in downtown that are existing that could change and that could be, make a big difference is very small. It's essentially limited to the residential homes north of Center Street. Uh, everywhere else has already been used for some type of commercial and the, the parking demand I think will be pretty static and so we start seeing infill development or we see, uh, some biz, additional business turnover and more.
Even with this additional, you know, I mean, I mean, business could, if, if it turns into a dynamic downtown, which it's not today, but if it does turn into a dynamic downtown, we have, uh, the folks here who, at, at Allen's Block, that's what I'm pointing at. And we get a lot of people that are participating and restaurants are starting to open and, you know, closing Funfinity because restaurants are so popular or something like that. I mean, I love Funfinity. I'm using a nice example. I'm a, I'm a huge Funfinity fan. I try to keep them open.
Hey, they wrap it and they put a pixie stick on it.
So anyway, even, even in that scenario, you think that there won't be a parking?
All I think there definitely could be. I think we're, but we're eighteen months away from that.
Well, how far are we away from providing parking?
From doing a plan?
That's my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if, if we have, all of a sudden, this excessive issue with not having enough parking, won't that push a parking solution up sooner than it might if?
True, but to Brett's point, I don't typically like planning under duress. Uh, you often, you know, you, you get pushed along far, faster than you wanna go and sometimes don't make the right decision. Uh, so doing it prospectively in advance is always better. Uh, I, I think something that may resolve some of your concerns is if we just change the geographic boundary or you recommend a change to the geographic, geographic boundary of that exception and say north of Center Street. Uh, cuz then that reduce, uh, eliminates all your concern about Center Street to Four Hundred South and it still addresses the things the council asked us, asked me to address, uh, with the couple property owners north of Center Street. And so it provides help to them. It doesn't apply to the downtown core, which again, I don't think it would have a big impact on in the immediate timeframe and it'll allow us to, uh, get through a, a parking study or a parking plan prior to making that kind of change in the core.
Yeah.
Cuz if we don't pass something, then there's at least two businesses that won't be able to get licensed.
At least one. It looks like the, uh, Jolly Circle Bike Shop will be able to provide, uh, pave more of their side yard to provide the required parking.
What was the other business, uh, uh, reception center at the?
Uh, I don't know exactly. So that is, uh, so now I'm having a brain cramp. Uh,
Or what is that place called?
Reynolds?
Cherie, uh-
Oh, you're thinking of a name.
Yeah, Cr- uh, the, Cherie Kilpak, um, owns that home and would like to do some type of professional office or small meeting space or something there and can't now.
Her place down the street is amazing. It's like so great.
The, the real, the, her office. Yeah, she's done a good job there.
Yeah.
Uh, and so she couldn't do that without providing all, uh, but with this, but without essentially building a parking lot on the site. And with all of the, especially in that case with all of the surrounding curb and other parking in the area, it, we just don't see that.
You know the type of business she's planning on opening?
No, she doesn't. No.
She doesn't know either.
No.
Very nebulous is what's going on.
Yeah.
I think part of the problem is, is just like anything else with government, is we just go forward without having a plan. We have no plan. We're just gonna say, well, we'll solve it as we get eighteen months down the road. And, and I think that's, that's not the right way to do it. Let's get a plan. Let's figure it out. And then let's say, yeah, that's good. So now Josh, take it over and run with it.
I agree.
But right now, we don't, you know, we don't know what she's gonna build, but we're saying, well, maybe she'll have this. If we don't pass this and she's not gonna do it, I know, you know, there's a couple of dentists in town that had their office practice in a home and they had to buy a lot behind them and put in a parking lot.
I'd love to hear some opposing views on this, Genevieve. I think you gotta have opposing views. I'd love to hear some opposing, that's why I'm asking you your opinion, but if you're saying we're eighteen months out before it's a thriving business, well, can, can we address the parking issue in eighteen months? So I'd love to hear some other thoughts on how this will be addressed. And maybe there's enough. Maybe the, uh, on-street parking up in Genevieve's neighborhood is?
A thought experiment, I might posit as we think through your exact question is, when, when would you all say that downtown was the most vibrant, the most active and the most economically productive?
I lived here for over forty years and it's not changed hardly a bit.
Okay, so we're at least back to eighty-three.
When I was in high school, it was, it was, uh, I mean, you know, it's kinda hard to tell cuz you're, I mean, we had a high spot, we had Allen's, we had Ream's, we didn't have the big box stores. We didn't have a lot of things. But I will tell you, we also, we also didn't have like two or three cars per household sometimes. And we also didn't have all the things that we have right now. But to me, if we're taking one business and saying, you don't have to have the required parking, we're actually saying to their neighbors who already has an established business that now they can park in front of your place. And you come to the point where people are saying, no, these are my parking spots because if we don't provide adequate parking for businesses, some of them it won't matter because if you've got a business office and everyone has to show up for work and they just have to come and park on First East and they have to walk to the business office, then that's fine. But if they're coming at eight o'clock and they're spending the entire day in the office, they'll park in front of somebody else's business and then that business has no ability when they're counting on a twenty-minute turnover for a client to come and come and go. So I think having a plan overall, to me, this is just, we're opening, we're going in opposite direction of where we want to control planning. And I think maybe part of it is, is maybe we have a difference of opinion between what you believe is the parking problems and maybe what we believe. So maybe it's an education part of it. Cuz it seems to me like, do you believe there's a parking problem downtown?
I think we'd have to define what a problem is first.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, like, let's just say between this zone that we're talking about, that we're going from Fourth North to Fourth, um, East, do you believe there's, and that, is there a parking problem in this area?
Again, I have-
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I know, we'd have to define problem, but I can tell you there's, there was fourteen items on my list, uh, when I got this job and parking in downtown was not one of them. And it is still not one of them. Uh, and that list came from the council. So my elected officials are telling me that right now parking in downtown doesn't rise to the top of their list of things they need me to address. I think that's the best answer.
They don't know what they're talking about anyway.
That's the best answer I could give.
Out of all the things that are in this proposal, what's most important to you is that we address two E with the requirement not applying to the story downtown? Is that what you were saying?
Uh, all the other stuff is important and needs to be done, but doesn't have as immediate potential impact. Uh, and was a planning staff initiative. The specific item, the, the one you just mentioned, uh, in five B. Oh, no, sorry, tell me the reference again.
Two E, uh, under eleven, six, one thirteen.
Two E. That was the specific provision the council asked me. That amendment is responding to the request council made. We may get to council and council might say, hey, that's not what we wanted you to do. That's crazy.
Okay.
Uh, but I kinda started at the, the simplest and most permissive way of accomplishing what they asked me to accomplish. And if we need to become, be, make it more complex and more restrictive, uh, to get over the finish line, then, then-
Then you're open.
Then that's fine. But I really, my anchoring bid was where my planning, uh, expertise and philosophy, uh, stands.
Okay.
So how far, again, I'm gonna go back to an earlier question. How far out is a parking solution? And again, you know, you might be right. It hasn't been a problem since nineteen eighty-three and maybe it won't be a problem till two thousand eighty-three. I don't know.
The, the, that thought experiment was actually not meant to come to that conclusion, but to say, most people that I've talked to would say downtown was most vibrant probably seventies and before. Uh, and that when we had J.C. Penney's downtown and we had a grocery store and an Osco and a-
We didn't have the freeway. That's-
Or the malls.
That's why.
True.
I, I would say, I would say the same, the same about, uh, Center Street and Provo.
Right.
But today, it's a completely different scenario.
Right.
And, um, I, I don't know that they were prepared for it either.
But is Provo, is Center Street in Provo active and vibrant and dynamic and do people go there?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And it's hard to find parking.
But do you go there?
But they do have parking.
I, I go there when it's not busy.
They have parking, they have parking facilities.
They do have some parking facilities, correct.
They're getting more. Facilities, so.
I was just-
I used to work down there and I had a-
Oh, yeah.
Parking spot, so it was easy for me to-
I mean, eventually you could just walk through the tunnel, right?
Parking facilities, when I go there.
To ask how, how, are businesses downtown, how many of them call with a complaint about the parking or?
Question.
People in town call and complain about the parking?
Not one instance in the four years I've been here. The only complaint I've received from parking is when we were talking about zoning the Allen's Block and the owners of the Retreat Salon, uh, came and said that they are concerned about their elderly clientele being able to have access to the parking. As a counterpoint, we had the owner of the hat shop come and say, please build everything and fill up all of my parking and I'm happy to have that problem.
Yeah.
He's not the owner of the hat shop anymore, but that's the only-
Park there if you need to go Magalbys.
Right. That's the only complaint that's been, uh, raised to me or to the department that I'm aware of in the time I've been here.
Yeah, I, I don't feel like there is a parking problem.
I don't know. I wonder though if you, and like we've already done polls and I'm not asking you to do one, but I, like Rod said earlier, I drive around that block a number of times to try to find a place to park.
And that's what we want to reduce. And the, the plant, really the ultimate end goal we'd want is, is we implement really dynamic parking management is that there are always a couple of spots available on each block face so that you don't have to circle because one of the big uh, elements that, uh, or one of the big pushes behind parking reform is that when we're not managing that properly in an urban area, a lot of congestion comes from people cruising for parking. So we wanna reduce the amount of driving people are doing to find that spot. So we wanna make them both make sure there's always a spot, so we price it right. And then that we show, know, we communicate good information and even dynamic information to people about where those parking stalls are so they can get where they wanna get to. Uh, and yes, we don't have those capabilities and those programs in place here at the city yet. So there, we are not in an optimum situation and there are definitely improvements we could make even to how we're doing things today.
And to Ralph's point earlier, I, I spend a lot of money, thousands of dollars a year in, in UPS. It's easier for me to go to Staples and pull right up the front door, unload large boxes. The guy comes out, processes everything for me and I'm on my way. It's, it's a nightmare to get into here. Now, that's one instance.
Just depends on the time of day.
And it depends on-
Yeah.
What you're involved with.
Right.
As opposed to other people.
Right.
But I just use that as an example. Again, I would say, let's figure out our parking and then let's implement this.
Like, like even if we had a plan that we were gonna say we're gonna build, I talked to you a little bit about this the other day when we were talking about parking is the city has a lot over here. It's gravelled, it's painted on the gravel, excuse me, uh, painted on the gravel to provide additional parking spots. But if we were to take, uh, s- some spot, maybe even, I'm just thinking, you know, on, on the fly, but like, say if you were to go over to the um, art museum and you were to build a parking facility right there that allowed for people to be able to walk. And then everybody that came into the city wanted a business here that could kinda help contribute towards that. You know, we do that for sewer, we do it for water, we do everything else. There's an impact fee.
Right.
So if we were to, able to create some kind of thing, it's a shared benefit for everybody, for the city, for all the businesses that are here. You know, instead of like continuing to say, well, we want your business, we're not gonna require you to have the parking. We want your business. Uh, but that's gonna really hurt the people that are established. Because they come to do their, they set up their business thinking that they have X number of stalls or they have X way of going. And then if an office building comes next door, but like I said, where people are parking all day long, it, it, it will just throttle that business down and it won't be able to function.
No, I, I agree.
So if we had some kind of plan, that's what I'm saying, is to say, well, what are we gonna do somehow? Someone has to create, you know, a space for parking. And who better for it than maybe the city in a partnership with the businesses? I don't know.
Yes, a parking district and parking in lieu of, uh, fees in lieu of are all widely accepted strategies for accomplishing.
And there's also like two-hour parking.
Go ahead.
Or just limiting.
Time-limited parking.
Time-limited parking, not metered even, but time-limited.
I have hundreds of pages of white papers behind the Provo Strategic Parking Plan with all these strategies in it. So there's a huge toolbox.
Options other than building a parking structure.
Yeah, that's, that's an option too.
And I've supported, I've supported that.
It is like at certain times that, you know, it'll be hard to park, but I still, like a majority of the day have no problem parking all along this section of Center Street so that my sister can catch Pokemon. And, and I, you know, like, there's no, there's no issue even in front of UPS, the UPS store, at, at most of the times during the day. But it's, there are certain times when it will be very busy. Like I can't, I can't do that when, when it's the middle of summer and they're at the splash pad cuz it is full all along here.
And that's why we'd go, when we'd go to do the planning, we'd do a lot of data gathering so we have objective statistics to, you know, make really informed decisions.
Fisher, I think is the one we haven't heard from yet in this discussion.
One of the things that, that bothers me a little is that we, we plan on having an active transportation system and talking about using bikes and walking. And yet, no one is willing to walk more than a couple of blocks to get any place because they're, they're gonna drive around the block until finally there's a, a space there. My point is if you build a, a, a parking lot, uh, someplace in the city and it's two blocks to, to get to the UPS store, we're still gonna have a problem with the UPS store. The problem with the UPS store is that they need to find another location.
Yeah.
Business is about location, location, location. Their location is bad because people are, people can't get to it properly.
Yeah.
So really, it should, it should move out. Unfortunately, whoever owns UPS or however it is owned, uh, doesn't believe in moving to another location, so. So, but.
Or it's a great way to bring people downtown.
Yeah, or it's a great location for them.
Right.
They're making a decision.
It's profitable for them, so why would they move?
Yeah.
Well, if, if they're, if they're being profitable, then they shouldn't be worrying about parking, right?
Well, they're.
I don't think they are.
The citizens are.
I know, and the consumer, and the consumer won't walk two blocks to get there.
I'm not.
Okay, okay. So all they have to do is manage it and say, the only people that can use these parking spots are those who have, have, have large packages. No, I, I guess the thing that bothers me is we can beat this thing to death. And it's not gonna accomplish uh, hill of beans because it's not gonna change. E- even if you build that parking space someplace else, it's still not gonna change. You're still gonna have the problems.
Yeah.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna help.
My, my concern, oh.
How long would it take for you to put together a parking plan? A well-thought-out parking plan?
Uh, a year and a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Are you willing to wait on this until after that is done?
Uh, I don't, I know the, the people that made the request at council don't want to wait.
We could address that piece separately.
Uh, the rest of it, uh, the rest of it, I don't think has, uh, aside from maybe the percentage, the maximum reduction percentage. Has a substantive impact on parking demand and supply downtown. I think it's primarily administrative uh, and clerical changes or, or copy editing changes. So I'm fine with, uh, uh, I mean, we, I, I don't have any opposition to waiting. But I don't see that there's a big benefit to waiting on those more administrative or clerical.
Right, so we, we could kind of piecemeal this out a little bit.
You can make.
And do some of it and wait on some of it.
You can uh, make a very specific motion saying that you move to recommend approval. Except for whatever provisions you'd like to strike.
But.
I mean, I have more information about what the council expected. Because does this go beyond the scope of what they were asking you to do? Like, is it way over here when it needs to be pulled back some? I don't know, cause I don't know what they expected of you.
Right, and I don't, I got two lines of direction in a public comment uh, period. And uh, my way of doing that, instead of, uh, I chose to make a proposal and then have discussion about the proposal. Uh, as opposed to going and facilitating a lot of discussion and then tailoring the proposal.
So there was someone there in the public comments that.
Yes, Shuri Kilpak came in specifically, yeah, a- addressed the council and they said, Josh, go do something.
We're tailing this whole thing to one individual.
That, that's the thing that would concern me is let's make sure that we're not.
I understand the discussion, but it's really coming down to one individual.
I think it's a representative example perhaps.
No, I just was asking the question about what's, what, where are we in the scope of what the council really wanted? And if it was one person on the council said, go fix this, what did they mean by that and where do we go with that?
Exactly, which is why I was mentioning to Chair Elingson that I went with the simplest and broadest solution. If we get to the council and they say, hey, you're, build a really big box and we just wanted a little tiny box. Then we can get to that little tiny box. And if you're uh, positioned from the planning commission, doing your job of reviewing uh, the policy direction, the planning direction of the city. If you don't, if you want to recommend to the council that, hey, we feel this is way too permissive. And we would, our opinion as essentially the expert panel on this or the, the pa- the board that you've selected to give you advice. And uh, direction on these things, this is our recommendation. Uh, they absolutely uh, respond to and appreciate and uh, consider that direction.
So, help me, could it, the same person who's coming before the council requesting whatever it is they're requesting? Come through you, come here, do that same thing that's within the bounds to say, I want some kind of variance to your policy. Rather than change the policy.
Only up to the twenty percent.
Let, let me ask, if I understand correctly, and I think this is, this, the, the city council really isn't asking for this huge massive. They, they probably wouldn't grant a hundred thousand dollars in eighteen months anyway. That's not, that's not on their agenda right now, as you stated earlier. It's really not that important to them. And maybe we're making this issue larger than what it is. But at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that we've got some plan in place that we're just not throwing out. You know, uh, or creating a situation where we've created a massive problem within five to ten years. Saying, well, this, this isn't gonna happen. And then all of a sudden, we're here and it happened. So i- is that basically, I mean.
I completely agree with you.
You see the city council approving a hundred thousand dollars to study parking in downtown?
Uh, in, in that timeframe, yeah. Once we finish the general plan and I say that reframing downtown says we need a parking plan. I think it's a pretty easy sell to say, out of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars I've been allocating for professional services about every year. That we spend that much on parking downtown. It's the, it's people's first and last impression many times of being here. It contributes, it has a great correlation with the economic vibrancy of downtown. It can be used as an economic development tool to accomplish a lot of the city's aims. And I think it's really important and was a big champion of the plan we did in Provo. And so, yeah, I, I, it's up to this point, I haven't received a lot of push on it. But I think it's a, a, a simple, not a simple, but a clear argument to be made to making the investment.
So, I think we have just a couple of different ways that we can move forward right now. We can either continue the whole item. Or we can go through and we can pull out the things that we're all okay with, like the alphabetizing of the table, that sort of stuff. Clear out those things, take those things and then uh, recommend that the rest of it come back to us at a future date. What, which of those two options?
Just recommend that those provisions not be, you know, recommend the council deny those provisions. However, there's a lot of options.
Any, any other suggestions for path forward or what's the field of the commission?
I liked the, Josh's suggestion of, cause a lot of our parking discussion has been between Center and four hundred South. But that's not even the section where there are businesses that are trying to, you know, come to Main Street but can't. And, and even though, I don't know if Jolly's was, wants to pave their side yard. But if they don't want to, but they will, do they have to? I mean, that's like ten thousand dollars, you know.
Part of a business, you have to.
But it's, but it's not encouraging small business. And I think that we want to make sure we encourage small business.
And it's not.
But they have to have a plan, the business, the business has to have a plan to be successful. And if parking's part of that, if I have a restaurant, I can't just count on the city saying we don't have any requirement.
The bicycle shop is not a restaurant, you know.
But it could be, but it could be. That's what we're talking about. Everything that we're doing here, we're talking about ability for, uh, none of it comes before the planning commission.
Even if Jal, the, the house that Jolly's is turning into a bike shop was to be a restaurant. I still, there's, I've never had issues parking on that section of Main Street. And um, there's Main Street to park on, there's the side road to park on, there are lots of options. And I don't feel like we should stymie business growth. For, and create these parking wastelands for all of this parking that's not necessary. Cause there's a lot of parking on buildings in that area that never gets parked in. But they had to build it because of the parking requirements. And I don't, that's not the look and feel that, that I want for Main Street. And that I think we want to have it for Main Street. We don't want them to have to build a lot of parking, like in front of the chiropractic place. When, just so that they can have a business and when they're only gonna use a small amount of it. And I don't think that we have a parking problem. But we do have a vitality problem on Main Street. And so, I, I think it's important to encourage these small businesses. And to not make it so cost prohibitive to do something so that they don't come to Main Street. And they don't end up in Springville or they go somewhere else that will make it more, you know, easy and less of a hardship to, to be here.
Yeah, it's a good argument. It's not a strategic argument, but I think it's a good argument. Um, it's, it's saying, we do want those businesses here and we do. But, you know, and, and again, I, I just don't know enough to know whether or not it's ever gonna even be an issue. Maybe it'll never be an issue. And uh, and I'm good with that. Cause I would hate to have a parking wasteland as well. That's why, from a strategic perspective, I look at it and say, alright, we're doing the reframing. And I said this earlier, but we're doing the reframing downtown. Shouldn't that be addressed as part of the reframing downtown? Shouldn't this whole issue be addressed? From, and that's a strategic level of addressing it. If we're just, you know, picking and choosing our uh, our, you know, well, here we're gonna do this, there we're gonna do that. It's not a strategic way of approaching it. That said, I want, I don't want to discourage any businesses, the small businesses either. I, I want those people to be here. But, you know, I don't want to do something today that's gonna cause us problems tomorrow. Whatever tomorrow is, whenever tomorrow is.
And the parking.
And I agree with what you said, you know. But the other thing is, is when you go in to build it or you come and want to have a small business going in, you know what the requirements are going into that small business. Whether it be twenty parking stalls for one business or five. You know, when you put your business plan together, what it's gonna cost you if you have to pave the side of the, the street to allow for parking. That's, that's, you know that, knowing what you're going in to do. It's not the city's responsibility to provide parking for all the businesses up and down the street.
It's not, but if we have a standard that isn't necessarily needing to be universally applied and is ineffective in some areas. Then adjusting the standard can be one of it.
Was used, he came in already knowing he might have to do that.
Sure.
Now, we're moving the goalposts a little bit, which I don't have a problem with, but I just don't think there's a comprehensive plan. That's my only problem. There's no comprehensive parking plan for the city whatsoever. So to Brett's point, I agree with what he was saying.
Okay, so then how do we want to move forward tonight is the, the question that I have for the commission.
Could I ask just a couple of questions? Cause it looks to me like we have a couple of different issues. One is, is we're trying to move everything away from the planning commission to the land use authority for approval. That's, that's the one issue. The other second issue that I see is that we're increasing the option for people to apply for a bigger exception. And then the third item that we have is we're doing a administrative, out, you know, alphabetizing the things. I'm just really confused as to why, what's the motivation to move it away from this planning commission? It, is there, I mean, we obviously have some pretty passionate opinions about parking. Is that why it's being asked to be moved away from the planning commission? Or because this is, this is being, to me, everything that we see in here is really moving it away from the planning commission. I, I don't need someone to make my job easier. I, I'd volunteer to do this because I want my community to be successful. But I don't need someone to come and take this away and say, well, we're just gonna have staff decide this and staff decide that. I, that's what I'm kind of confused about. So maybe you could clarify that. Was that what the council asked you to do?
No, the council did not tell us to do that. This is all staff initiated.
I'm actually okay with that.
And uh, I don't think the, the criteria for evaluating this would be whether we're trying to make your job easier. But whether we're trying to make the administration of the development process easier, more straightforward and more predictable.
But then you're only having one person approve it.
Right. We want to take any.
One person's opinions dictate what happens. That's what I'm kind of.
Well, you could say that one person's implementation of the criteria.
Well, no, you're, you're saying according to this, that, that if someone applies for a twenty-five percent. We've increased it to a twenty-five percent, um, right? We've, um, we, anyone can apply, but then it will be approved by the land use authority.
According to the criteria.
According to the criteria. Cause what we're making is we're making a change in the way we're doing government in the city, right?
No. No. You are an administrative, eh, when you sit here, not, what you're doing right now is legislative. So you're making a recommendation to the council. What you do when you review a site plan or a conditional use permit or a parking reduction is administrative. No, that, those things are administrative. So you're not acting in a recommending function. You're simply evaluating the application and determining whether it complies with the code. You have absolutely no discretion uh, to approve or deny that application. Aside from substantial evidence on the record that tells you whether or not it meets the code. If you deny an application when it clearly meets the code, that's arbitrary and capricious and we get sued and they get to do what they want. Uh, so all we're doing is saying for somebody applying for that, the standard is still the same. They just don't have to come to the planning commission and go through that presentation. And staff doesn't have to write the staff report. And we don't have to add it to, uh, deal with the, the timing and the agendas. But that it's something that uh, staff can do on an as needed basis to streamline and remove. Uh, any additional perceived risk from the development pipeline. That's, that's really, uh, we don't feel that you're doing a bad job. Or that we're not, we don't want to bring things to the planning commission. But we also know and planners across the state, actually, across the state. One of the, kind of the planning gurus or uh, people we look to uh, in, in the state. A guy named Wilson McCorn, who's really been running legislative priorities for planning for thirty years. Uh, one of his blog posts this year, uh, at, coming out of the legislative session. That was, was that we need to take everything we can uh, that is not discretionary. Where the public, where public input doesn't factor into it and get that out of a public meeting session. Uh, because it generally only provides negative outcomes where people feel that their voices weren't heard. Uh, that what they said didn't make a difference because it legally can't make a difference. And where uh, additional discretion or arbitrariness comes into a process. It should be very uh, straightforward and almost essentially clerical. So that's really what these Land Use and Development Management Act changes are doing across the board. Is saying, is limiting the number of reviews we can do. And limiting uh, the uh, discretion that, and this, and the way that administrative items are subject to. Uh, that kind of discretion. And I also look at it as anything we can do to get ahead of the states, of the legislatures push to do that. And be proactive and strategic, uh, I am in favor of. Because it just, they just keep ratcheting it down on us. And we actually do a really great job here in Springville. There are some cities that have people come back to the planning commission two or three times for a plat. When it's really, are your lots the right size? Did you make the streets? And so, in responding to some of those less good actors in the state, the planning, this legislature's really cramped down on us. And these, most of these changes that I've brought up here are anticipating that, responding to that. And also just trying to make the process better for the applicant. We're, we're not, we're confident that you can deal with the load if we brought you everything and that you uh, will make a good decision. We just don't see that it's a necessary part of the development review process to do that when it's not absolutely necessary. We'd rather have you spending all your time doing this uh, kind of thing. And having really in-depth, detailed discussions about codes and policies and, and plans. That's really where I think we get the most value. And, and the, and the city council is, has communicated that a lot recently. That they appreciate the discussion. Cause they're not gonna have a, where are we at? An hour and a half discussion about uh, parking in the downtown. They just don't have the bandwidth for that. And on the act of transportation plan, they didn't have a two-hour meeting about that at one time to discuss the minutia that you did. And uh, the mayor and members of the. And uh, the mayor and members of the council really asked me to communicate back to you all how much they appreciate you taking the time that they can know that it comes to them having a high level of rigor and review and analysis from this committee or from this commission. So that really helps a lot. And the more headroom we can give to do those more strategic elements than doing administrative approvals, I think is beneficial. I can really get off on a tangent. Sorry. That's, I guess that's my, my very long-winded answer. You do need a uh, public hearing on this as it is legislative and we could, I'm happy to respond to any additional questions.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Public hearing is now open on this matter. If anyone in the vast public would like to come address the commission.
My name's Mindy Bright. Do you need anything else? Oh, eight fifty-three east, one thousand south. So um, I've only been able to listen to what has been said today and I feel like uh, all the clerical, all of the clerical changes, great, be passed, sounds wonderful. Parking, ah, is always a big issue. I feel like um, uh, we don't have a, a parking problem. I mean, if you want princess parking, yes, then that is a problem, but I don't feel like overall we have a parking issue. I feel like uh, this will allow a lot of business to come to um, our city, which we really need. And it doesn't al- uh, allow, uh, or it doesn't stop um, businesses from, I mean, it will allow businesses to come and it, and it allows them to start off on a good foot without having to have so many costs um, involved. So I feel like overall that this should be passed. And if there are any other issues that we need to deal with in the future, then we can deal with them at that time. Now, I'm all about proactive planning and we do have the the downtown, framing downtown, which does have um, a, a place in there for us to look at parking, a study. And I feel like that is necessary too, but that will happen with the reframing downtown part, not necessarily with what's happening here. So I do feel like we are addressing those issues. They will, they will be looked at and thoroughly looked at. But I don't feel like that stops us from passing um, these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Logan Millsap. I'm at one three three south, eight eighty east here in Springville. Um, I, I appreciate all of you guys' uh, discussion and really getting into the details and and trying to think proactively long-term about like, what are gonna be the unintended consequences of some of these changes we might make tonight? Or, or at a future meeting. Though I do think, as I've listened to your discussion, it seems sometimes that we are worried about these hypothetical situations of like, yeah, but what happens if we have some terrible lack of parking, which, which I know that we need to kind of think about and plan ahead for. But we also know right now, currently, uh, a non-hypothetical situation. We know that some of these um, parking requirements are preventing businesses from opening or from opening in a timely manner or from um, being able to afford to contribute to our downtown. And so I think that we should, we should focus more on the current problem we have. And and leave those hypotheticals to, to a future parking plan, which we can develop over time when funding maybe is, comes available. But I, I should, I should hope that we are a little bit more proactive and worried about the vitality of our downtown than than some of these hypothetical situations. So, thanks.
Not gonna happen. Not required, no.
Do we have a motion for the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor? Do we have a motion for the item before us? Or do you want me to go through it section by section? Cause I can do that too.
I think that's the harder part, yeah.
Okay, why don't we start with that just to identify your ski points? Does that sound okay? Everybody's good with the table adjustments? Okay. And are-
Where were you with that first one, just so I can take notes?
The very end.
Start maybe with the first one.
Okay, yeah. Turning my pages all the way back to the beginning of this.
Okay, so you, the first one you were talking about was the-
Just the alphabetized title.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But back at the very beginning, eleven dash six, one thirteen. I don't see anything with page one. Is everybody okay with like page one?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good there. Uh, page two?
I, I have a problem with moving it to land use authority. That's just my opinion. I don't think it's a very good method to go to.
I'm okay with it.
I do not have a problem with that.
How many, I have a concern in general with land use authority changes throughout the document.
I agree with Ralph.
So we've got two. Anybody else? Okay. Um, what about E, the requirement applying to historic downtown? Do we have concerns with that? Or do you want to narrow down a little bit more or just leave it how it is?
I, I don't have any problems with as it is, but um, I, I would support if it was to be reduced to Center Street to four hundred north, if that makes more people comfortable with it.
Okay. My, my concern with it is just, does this do what the council asked or does it go beyond that?
And why?
And, and yes, and-
Why? Why make these changes? That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
You know, why, why make the change for, cause it's, these are, these are gonna have, this is a big section of what we've been talking about for last few months. And we're talking about making a big change to that whole section. So that's what I have issue with, so.
Okay, then I would suggest that we just take that portion out. Um, when we go through and do the motion and we can set that part aside and ask staff to bring that one back with with some clarification of direction from council or uh, a more nuanced recommendation. Um, the next page, accessible parking, are we all good on that one?
I'm good with it.
And then the last one would be the addition of the, the standards.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
Is it with the addition of the standards or with changing twenty to twenty-five percent?
Oh, yeah, though.
Cause they could be independent.
Those would definitely be independent of each other. Do we have any concerns with the standards section being put in on uh, five reduction of parking standards? Putting in I through X.
I, I do, I have an issue with it, but that's just my, it's kind of continuing on that whole, I'm not sure why we wanna make all these changes. You know what I mean? To me, it's, that's, that's what I have an issue with and I kind of, I've said my part on that, so.
Okay. Any other concerns with this? Okay. Uh, what about the twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I'm with Ralph on that.
And I hope anybody else have a concern. We, we've got two concerns on there.
See, for me, I'm actually okay with this whole thing. If we have in place, I mean, I, for me, I, I don't even need to go through it. I'm okay with everything as long as we say, we're gonna get on top of the strate, the strategic side of it with reframing downtown. And really make sure that we're addressing it um, in the process. I mean, I would, I would vote yes. I would, I would vote to, to recommend approval of this whole thing. With the understanding that part of reframing downtown, we just make sure that we do the study and understand what it's gonna take. And, you know, whether people wanna walk two blocks or not, I don't care. I'm willing to walk the two blocks if there's a place, yeah.
But I think we should have the plan in place first before we make all these changes, cause it's-
Again, it's, it's a recommendation, right? And so-
Well, I know, but it's still changing the way we're doing it.
Would be to put the plan in place before we do this.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that's, I think that that is time prohibitive.
Sadly. Sadly, it should have been addressed before now.
But right, but this right now, as it sits, is working, right?
No, it's not working.
What's not working about any of the changes that have been taken place?
People that want to have businesses that can't because this isn't working for them.
I think if the businesses was to, were to come and say, I'm business A, here's why I can't do business in Springville. And then we could look at that. But just opening the floodgates and saying, we're gonna try to make it possible for everybody to have a business. I mean, that's, that's really, that's part of having a business is being able to generate the traffic, being able to handle the traffic. But that's just my opinion. So I'm only one vote, so.
Some of these-
Opening the floodgates would mean re redo, just getting rid of any parking requirements whatsoever. And we're not recommending that.
No, we're, we're not getting any parking requirements. We're just not, if a business doesn't change the square footage, but just changes the use, we're not requiring them to have an additional parking spot.
I understand.
So it's not just opening the floodgates where no one has to put in parking, or if they build something new, they don't have to put in parking. This is so that, you know, a house that the only parking area that it really has is the driveway can be converted into a business that would normally require two and a half spots. They only have, you know, one spot or something. And so it's not, it's not as, as loosey goosey as, as it may seem hypothetically, because it, it's more to accommodate these smaller buildings that already exist that are on Main Street so that they can be used for something other than a residence.
Chair Ellingson, would you, would you entertain a motion?
I would definitely entertain a motion.
Alright, I'll move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter six, Section one one three, off-street parking with the understanding that the city will pursue a parking study and address parking if the study shows the need.
Or complete a parking plan or what's-
Yeah, parking, strategic plan for parking. With the, with the understanding that the city will provide a strategic plan for parking, which includes the study.
I second that.
You want to in, including the requirement for the downtown area in this motion or removing that?
I'm saying no change, just add the parking plan that needs to come after.
I second that.
We'll just go down the line on this one, uh, starting at this end.
I still have concerns if we've gone beyond, so I guess that would be me. That's fine.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
How many is that?
That means you, you're the tiebreaker.
The tiebreaker? That's so exciting. Not much, no. I'll put I on this one. So that will carry the recommendation to the city council with the caveat that we are strongly in wanting that parking plan in place. And that there's some significant concerns in the commission with parking in general.
Like, I don't know if it's so much the parking though, as to what Ann says. I think we've gone way beyond the scope of what the city council's asking.
Well, and that may be-
That's just my opinion.
But when it gets to them, they will be able to say-
Sure, and I think Josh, if you can communicate that, cause for me it is, did this go beyond what the city council was asking? And they get the only ones that can answer that. If it came out of one person coming up and speaking and one council member saying, go fix this, like, I don't know, we don't know.
What's the mandate?
So I think that that just, for me, I, you know, hopefully that just raises a red flag for the council to, to look at it and say, what did we mean by this? And is this what we were wanting Josh to do? That's my only concern.
We'll include the minutes and uh, I always try to do my best job to try to crystallize the discussion.
So member Crandall can add everything.
Right.
Well, that's why it's so important for us to have the discussion, so that it does go into the minutes, so that the city councillors can, they can-
They'll take the time to read this.
Read through it.
Obviously, we're a split decision and there's gotta be a-
And, and-
They gotta take this serious.
I know that they-
It's an easy-
They do.
Hundred and five minute YouTube stint. I spend that much time.
That's right.
Without thinking about it.
Cause we're recorded.
I mean, that's actually really brilliant that any council member that, that really wants to understand the conversation can watch it.
Yeah.
At one and a half speed. Alright, is there anything else from staff that you'd like to bring forward before we adjourn?
I just wanna reiterate again, uh, how much the mayor conveyed his appreciation uh, to you for your work on the active transportation plan specifically. He wanted uh, to make sure that the loop was closed back to you, uh, so that you knew uh, that he particularly, he said, I read all the minutes. I uh, uh, you know, read all the reports, the plan. And knowing that it was vetted so thoroughly uh, allows the council to make an informed but efficient decision, knowing that with the scope of their duties, they generally will not have the ability to uh, go into that level of detail. And that it's very appreciated that they can trust that uh, this commission has. And so, yeah, the mayor just really wanted me to convey, and I, I feel the same way to convey uh, how much we value your, your work, your input, your discussion. And the uh, especially when there are a difference of, of opinion and perspective, that uh, I, I don't see any instance in which public policy is not well-served by having thorough discussion. And, and, you know, vetting or airing disagreement and perspectives, I think that's always, always productive. As long as we don't, you know, turn into the, the congress and just only do that.
I was this close to a nay, but I just uh, it was-
So uh-
Can't be, it was your motion.
Yeah, well. That's why I put in, that's why I put the strategic plan in though.
I mean, and I, I think in discussion too, it would be helpful. I feel like a lot of times we ask for, or ask to approve or to recommend things. And then we say, well, great, but we would like to see something else added to it. And then we're counting on downstream that that's happening. I don't know whatever happened with the active transportation plan.
Those things worry me.
You know what I'm saying? And I, and I think this is kind of falls into that same, I think the discussion is good. I really value the opinion of all the people here too. And those that have come and spent time here, but I, I always hate to send it downstream, like float it down and say, yeah, we're, we're gonna send the boat on down the stream. But oh, there's a little flag on there that says, oh, you need to look at this. And then we're counting on somebody else who has less time to say, yeah, okay, we're gonna, now it's just gonna float on past. And it's gonna keep on going.
We're counting on staff, actually.
Well, but staff really doesn't have the ability to create, um, you know, to modify the transportation plan. You know what I'm saying? The council, no, 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 but wait a minute. The council has to say, here's what we're going to approve or not to approve. So we're kind of sending it down with a note that says, yeah, but, and I think that maybe we do a better job if we stop, arrange it and then send it to the council with an, you know, an approach instead of just kicking the can down the road and telling them, yeah, you guys need to deal with, with parking or whatever. And maybe this isn't the right place to do it. That's the only thing I feel bad about.
In most scenarios, I would agree with you a hundred percent. But I do think that we have some issues in Springville downtown right now that need to be addressed. And, you know, I, I just don't think, I think parking is frankly, I think it's several years out. And, you know, I, I just don't think, I think parking is, frankly, I think it's several years out. And if we don't start to address some things with the agreement that we will, you know, have a parking plan in place and do the proper studies and stuff. But generally, I agree with you. From a strategic perspective, we should have thought through all this stuff. But, but at the end of the day, it's these guys that are going to end up going in with a new strategy. Reframing downtown and presenting it to the guys based on our feedback.
Right, but if downtown wasn't a parking issue, we wouldn't have everything building out west, right? We're, we're moving most of the stuff out town, McDonald's, everything else is moving out there. Why? Because they can't put a McDonald's on the corner of the Allen's block like the old High Spot used to be, because it's not possible. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't work. There's not parking there. So all of those businesses are moving to the west.
That's not just parking, that's accessibility.
And we know that, we know that as far as transportation goes. When the freeway came in, Springville, Springville dried up. I know that, because I used to ride on State Street all the way from Spanish Fort to Logan on State Street. And, you know, you were stopping at every mom and pop store. Poor parents were begging their kids, no, you can't have a popsicle. You have to wait till Orem, right? So that's, that's what I'm saying is, is that's where the vitality was. But now, we do have an issue of trying to help people change their patterns again.
So we need to draw people here.
We draw them here, but you don't draw them here by telling them you can't, there's no parking, because that's what happens with...
We don't, we don't know that. I mean, if you look at a lot of cities, I mean, we brought up Provo as a city. And I personally don't go there during busy hours because I don't want to. So when we go out to eat at Black Sheep or wherever, we go during off-hours. But, you know, at the end of the day, all it took was New Skin building a big old building. And then that provided a, a clientele for all of these restaurants that started opening up. But now, it's, it's expanded and other, other things have occurred. And I still think parking sucks over there, but...
But they still have parking structures. We don't...
So to the...
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to...
But that was thirty years ago.
I just want to just make one change in that. We send, we send it down on a raft like that. But it's not just like a note or a flag. We have like a helmsman, and that's what the staff is. They're, they go to the city council meeting and they convey that and broadcast what we talk about and those provisions that we put on there, those additions, those changes. So they are there to make sure that those, those changes that we recommend don't get lost. And I think that that's, that's an important and, and valued function that staff, that staff does provide for the planning commission.
It, it's obvious that I need to do a better job at closing that loop and specifically with the Active Transportation Plan. Just, and this is something the mayor asked me to convey, and I just forgot, that your recommendations had a direct impact on the discussion that the city council had and on the plan. The plan now has a section in the policy recommendations on evaluating the safety of each facility to make sure that we're not encouraging behavior that's inappropriate to the context based on signage or bike boulevards and neighborhoods to the concern that Ann really championed. And then it also has a section in there on education that Commissioner Fair asked, and then there... Was there, it's just three? The, and then there, in the adoption ordinance, the last provision in the adoption ordinance directs public work, directs staff with public works as the lead department to develop a policy for public involvement and public notice for all capital projects in the city. So the mayor saw that request from the count, from the commission, that's something that's very important to him, that we communicate. We, well, with our citizens, we get them involved ahead of time and that he's also, you know, very sensitive to the, the issues that were brought up here, that we've missed that. And so he actually said, hey, I think it's important that this directive that the planning commission has given us in terms of active transportation be applied more broadly. So Troy Fitzgerald, our city administrator, wrote a specific provision into that adoption ordinance that said, uh, citywide policy will be adopted to make sure we do that. So your push on that actually led to the council adopting something even broader that will have, I think, a really positive impact on how we go about doing capital projects out, out in the city for, for, for the future. So all of, all of your messages and avalanches were picked up and had a, had a substantial impact in the process and are represented in the final plan.
And we're just trying to help.
I think Ralph signed it wrong.
Yeah. Heather?
What?
What do we do if we had a commissioner sign on the wrong line? Just what, oh, so she said just draw...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you always getting here, though.
It's helpful. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.